Media recognition from Bloomberg, Reuters, recycling trade publications. Attended process for 100% recovery of critical metals, including cobalt, lithium, nickel, manganese, aluminum. American Manganese is focused on recycling lithium ion batteries for electric vehicles. American Manganese trades on the TSX Venture, AMY, the US, AMYZF in Frankfurt, 2AM. For more information, visit AmericanManganeseInc.com or phone me, Larry Ray, at 778-574-4444.
Welcome to The Goddard Report. Comments made on The Goddard Report and TalkDigitalNetwork.com are an expression of opinion only. Here is Jim Goddard.
My guest is Jordan Bateman. He's the Vice President of Communications and Marketing for the Independent Contractors and Business Association. Welcome back to the show, Jordan.
Hey, thanks for having me, Jim.
Jordan, more court challenges to the Trans Mountain Pipeline, which has been approved by the Federal Cabinet, who believes that they've followed all the directions sent down by the Court of Appeal. What's behind these new legal actions and do they have a hope in hell?
Well, I don't think they do. Look, it's a little bit of deja vu all over again, I guess, but, you know, it seems that nothing the government does in its approval process will be enough for these pipeline groups who are opposed to the project. So, you know, they're going to throw every hail mary they can, drag governments back into court, force taxpayers to pay more money defending a process that frankly has been upheld in 18 out of 19 court cases. So, you know, 19 times they've challenged Trans Mountain, 18 times Trans Mountain has won. The one time it didn't, Federal Cabinet had to go back and work on some more First Nations conversations and dialogue and, you know, shore up a little bit of the plan on the water. They did both of those things. Retired Supreme Court Justice leading the way. So, you know, we believe they've met the thresholds. These professional protesters, though, they'll never be content. And you can already see them, they're spinning around like crazy, they're throwing, you know, 71-year-old men into scuba gear and then trying to get them to climb cranes out of the water to get arrested and to slow construction. You know, they're holding press conferences, you know, claiming that, you know, CSIS is, you know, spying on them and causing them all sorts of troubles. These guys are desperate and it's because we're in the closing days of this argument and the public has moved on and said, "Let's build this pipeline."
We have two First Nations groups that say they might be interested in buying part or all of the pipeline. Does that show you that they're more interested in jobs and the economy than protesting stuff that doesn't bother them? Because it seems to me most of the protesters live hundreds of miles away from the pipeline.
Precisely. You know, the people who are closest to it generally are the ones who support it the most because they know the economic benefits that will come with the pipeline. You know, it's really interesting and frankly exciting to see these groups of First Nations coming together and not just on one bid, but on multiple bids for a share of the pipeline. It gives me hope that we're maybe getting past the... Look, the environmental movement, professional protest movement funded by, you know, American billionaires with their own agendas, you know, they've been trying to drive a wedge between First Nations and, you know, the rest of Canadians for a long time. They use environmental, they use their environmental arguments to try to create this wedge. The truth is, you know, First Nations and other Canadians are actually a lot closer than we think. You know, we think along the same lines as far as resource development. We want people to be out of poverty, whether they live on reserve or off. You know, we want economic opportunities for our kids and our grandkids. We want the revenues to come into our, for taxes to help pay for services, revenues that don't come out of our, you know, own pockets but come out of, you know, these types of country building projects. So, you know, it's exciting to see them bidding on it. You know, my suspicion is, you know, kind of be on hold until after the federal election, which makes sense. It would be tough for a sitting government to sell their stake in a pipeline with three months before an election. But no matter what, at least they're showing confidence in it. The Eagle, there's a Eagle Spirit Pipeline in the North, they're going to start talking with Alaska in order to get past Justin Trudeau's pipeline or offshore, north coast tanker ban. So, they're talking to Alaska, but going through there, there's a lot of exciting things happening in the, those First Nations who are a little bit more entrepreneurial.
You talked about foreign influence on the environmental movement in Canada. Is Alberta's new premier doing something about that?
Yeah, Jason Kenny. He's announced an inquiry, an investigation into many of these frankly anti-Alberta groups who have been set up or received, you know, millions and millions of dollars in funding from American foundations and then billionaires in order to fight Canadian energy. You know, Jim, there was this really striking video out of Penitentin. Andrew Shear was in Penitentin this week, you know, doing what you do in a summer before an election. And this elderly woman jumped out of her car and went over to Andrew and just caught him video raw, started talking to him about her son, who's 50 years old, lives in Calgary, he's been out of work for two and a half years because their old company that he was an executive with went under, and how desperate she is for him to get back to work, how he's been searching for work and can't find it, how, you know, they've had to sell some of their assets, you know, her home, she's moved, she and her husband have moved to a smaller home in order to help support him and his family. And it's a good reminder that, you know, there are real Canadians hurting today because of the anti-Canadian policies put forward by these environmental groups. And when you have the Tides Foundation taking money from the States and putting it into things like Dogwood Initiative, putting it into, you know, taking Rockefeller Foundation money and it goes to things like Lead Now, and they openly brag, Stand Earth is another one, the Pembina Institute, these groups openly brag about shutting down energy projects, you know, defeating politicians who support energy projects and putting Albertans out of work. And, you know, this is an example, like, there's a real human cost to that. And, you know, this family has been through hell in trying to deal with these issues. I wish that these guys had the courage to look that family in the eye and somehow explain that this is good for the world, for those folks to be struggling like this. Of course, they won't, they're cowards, they claim that they're not getting any of this money. We know they are. We've seen the tax declarations. Vivian Kraus has done incredible work on this and I look forward to seeing what Premier Kenny's inquiry turns up about it.
Well, I know they're complaining about sludgy oil that comes from Alberta. What about the sludgy oil that comes out of Los Angeles where they've built cute buildings over top of the donkey pumps that sometimes are right in the middle of schoolyards? They don't seem to be picketing those places.
Oh, it's complete hypocrisy. You know, even as they were complaining about tanker traffic here, you know, Stuart Muir from Resource Works tweeted out about a Russian tanker that picked up oil in Alaska, was dropping it off in the Puget Sound at the refinery, traveled through our waters to get there and, you know, were the protesters at the dock trying to protest to turn away that ship? No, of course not. Were they, you know, was the governor of Washington State who's running for president on a, some sort of climate change agenda when he can't even get a carbon tax through? Was he there, you know, rallying, you know, railing against this, turning it away? No, of course not. So, you know, these American groups more than happy to make Canadians sacrifice, make us pay more for oil and gas, you know, plunge our economy into recession, put people out of work in Calgary and in Fort Mac, but not willing to do the same thing for their own. So, they're complete hypocrites and that's why I think so many Canadians today, by margin more than two to one now, support the Trans Mountain Pipeline. We want more pipelines built, we're excited that First Nations are coming on board. And, you know, these professional protesters, you know, they're having to resort to stunts like sticking grandpas up on cranes and, you know, releasing documents that somehow claim that CSIS was wrong for keeping an eye on them, when these groups themselves say they'll do whatever it takes to stop this critical infrastructure. So, they're running out of money, they're having to find different ways to try to stay in the public consciousness, but what they don't realize is the public has moved on and disagrees with them wholeheartedly.
Sure, and if people think environmental groups could be just harmless entities, go back to the 80s when we had the Squamish Five blowing up hydro lines in BC and they also blew up a defense plant in Toronto and killed a person, so they're not absolutely harmless if they decide to go to extreme.
Yeah, we hope they're harmless, but there are examples like that, you know, back during the Clackwatt Sound days and Supora Berman should remember this, she was involved in it, you know, there were people, you know, putting spikes into trees so that, you know, loggers would come and cut down a tree and, you know, a spike would fly out at them and cause damage, you know, and could cause injury. So, things like this happen, they shouldn't happen, we don't want them to happen. Look, you know, speaking on behalf of the people who are going to build this pipeline, they don't want to have to be, there's enough safety issues to worry about without some idiot protester wandering into the middle of a construction site and, you know, maybe not being seen, not wearing proper safety gear and then getting hurt or hurting, you know, innocent people. And I think of the RCMP officers who have to go, look, these guys were hanging off a bridge less than a year ago. RCMP officers having to go onto that bridge, you know, as their kids are watching at home live on TV, you know, and try to get these folks down, you know, all it takes is for a line to snap, for an accident, someone to struggle and, you know, an RCMP officer is hurt or worse, right in front of their kids on TV. So, you know, we need to remember, there's a human cost to this and, you know, the groups like Stand Earth and Pembina, it's over, it's over. You guys lost in the court of public opinion, you lost in government. This thing has been approved through all the normal means, it's time to move on.
What I remember about Supora Berman the most during the Clackwatt Sound protests and their court appearances is everybody involved in that movement smoked, including her. And they're telling us, you know, they can't control their own internal environment and they're polluting mine. And so, you know, I lost a lot of respect for them just because of that.
So, I was just watching a YouTube video from the 1950s or 40s of a Green Bay Packers star wide receiver endorsing cigarettes and he's standing there and what will become Lambeau Field, smoking a cigarette, talking about how it relaxes him before a game. So, yeah, the world has changed, there's no doubt about it.
We'll have more with Jordan Bateman right after this.
Grand Portage Resources Herbert Gold Project in Southeast Alaska highlights increased gold resource indicated and inferred of 860,000 ounces in excess of 10 grams per ton gold. Expansion drilling is planned on the Herbert Gold property for the summer of 2019. Grand Portage Resources trading symbols are GPG on the TSX Venture, GPTRF on the OTCQB, and GPB on Frankfurt. For more information, please visit our website, grandportage.com.
Cypress Development Corp. is developing a world-class lithium resource in the heart of Clayton Valley, Nevada. The size of the resource makes the Clayton Valley project a premier asset with the potential to impact the future of lithium supply. Cypress Development Corp. trades on the TSX Venture Exchange, symbol CYP, the OTCQB, symbol CYDBF, and on Frankfurt, symbol C1Z1. For more information, please visit our website, cyprisdvelopmentcorp.com.
Welcome back, we're speaking with Jordan Bateman. Jordan, we had BC's NDP Finance Minister Carol James with a big smile on her face brag about how her government's policies of foreign buyer taxes of 20%, vacant home taxes and special taxes on homes over $3 million had driven down real estate prices. Well, that means your home is worth a whole lot less than it used to be. Have you ever seen a government brag about wrecking your home equity and perhaps your retirement plans, you know, to make use of it?
Yeah, usually the only governments that brag about, you know, destroying personal wealth are the communist ones that were defeated by Ronald Reagan and in the Cold War. Yeah, it's discouraging. Bluntly, a lot of her things, a lot of her policy, so-called policy victories, really were just fortunate timing with the new rules around the mortgage stress tests brought in by the, brought in by the federal governments. You know, if you talk to realtors, if you look at the actual analysis, it's those stress tests more than anything else that have kind of flipped the market to become a buyer's market. And, you know, now we're kind of in this paralysis where, okay, no one really wants to pull the trigger on buying a home because they're not sure if it's going to continue to drop in value, everyone wants to feel like they're getting the best deal possible and, you know, it's actually creating a snowball effect. I will say this, Carol James is bragging now, I bet you she won't be quite so bullish on it as she has to stand there and release the financial statements for the province and, you know, property transfer tax and other, you know, property taxes, other relevant taxes will have plunged because there isn't that kind of market. And further, it's going to hurt retail sales as well because you think of, you know, all the, you know, when you refinance your house, oftentimes you'll put some money in for renovations or you'll take the opportunity to upgrade your fridge or your dishwasher or, you know, if you follow Andrew Weaver's crazy advice, you'll take that money and refinance your house and buy yourself an electric vehicle, while all of that is evaporating too because people no longer have that kind of equity in their home in order to refinance their house and purchase that. So, retail, I think, will be down, we know housing will be down, those have been major cash cows for government over the past 10 years, since the 2008 recession. Kind of concerning about what that means going forward.
Well, also historically, governments don't get re-elected when housing values go down because people just don't feel as rich as they did before.
Well, exactly. So, you know, this claim that they're making life more affordable works for that small group who can, you know, maybe are trying to get into the housing market, but, you know, for the, you know, two-thirds of Bruce Clummins who do own their own home already, got to be a little bit of a concern for them. You know, already we're starting to see in polling, Insights West was out with a poll today that housing affordability is less of a concern for people now and not surprising as prices go down. That's actually probably bad news politically for the NDP as, you know, I don't think that, you know, that's how they wanted to build their coalition and, you know, they may think they're solving the problem, but they're just creating a whole different group of enemies in it.
We'll have more with Jordan Bateman right after this.
Hi, I'm Douglas Mason, President and CEO of Rainy Mountain Royalty Corp., RMO on the TSX Venture Exchange. Rainy Mountain Royalty Corp. is a Canadian-based mineral exploration project generator. The company currently holds multiple property interests in Ontario with joint venture partners and is seeking further joint venture partners for other drill-ready properties in our portfolio. For more information, please visit our website at rmroyalty.com or call me at 604-922-2030.
Don't miss out. Stay informed, receive the HowStreet.com Weekly Recap with thought-provoking podcasts, radio, and articles delivered to your inbox. Sign up for the HowStreet.com Weekly Recap on our homepage at HowStreet.com.
Welcome back, we're speaking with Jordan Bateman. We were just talking about housing affordability. Well, even with lower prices, homes in Vancouver still terrifically pricey for the average person or especially for the new home buyer, so they have to rent. Is it, is Vancouver City Council making it easier for people to find a place to rent?
No, Vancouver City Council is actually doing the opposite. In recent weeks, they voted down two pretty reasonable developments, low-rise, less than six stories, simply because a group of neighbors have come out and acted as nimby's to stop it. And it's perplexing because, you know, rentals is definitely needed, some of these were two and three, there's even a few four-bedroom units. So, you know, would have been great for families, would have helped more people get into the market, but this scattered council, yeah, voted to get rid of it. One such property now was going to have 19 townhouses, but now, you know, they'll just keep their old zoning and the owner said, "Okay, well, forget that, I'll just build a nice new mansion for myself." So, not sure how that helps the cause of housing affordability.
So, instead of homes for 19 families, you have a home for one?
Exactly, and this one was the one that happened to be near, across the street apparently, next door to a hospice. A lot of people in the neighborhood glommed onto that hospice as a reason to defeat it, but, you know, this was going to have underground parking, it was going to be nice units for people, a certain number of rooms, you know, it just, it would have made sense, a lot of sense for that neighborhood in that context. And at a time where government needs to be finding ways to, you know, encourage more housing of all sorts, you know, both ownership and rental, here you have councils proving that they're very sensitive to public pressure. The word is out in the protest community in Vancouver, if you can get 50 people out to the public hearing yelling and screaming at the mayor and council, that mayor and council will buckle, they'll fold, they'll defeat even the best developments and they'll keep your neighborhood exactly how it's always been.
The government's gasoline price inquiry in British Columbia, the major oil companies are refusing to divulge some information, does that make these hearings useless?
Oh, the hearings were already useless. They're useless because government refused to allow, refused to look in the mirror, no analysis of their own tax requirements, no analysis of what minimum wage increases meant, what property tax increases mean, no analysis of what the clean energy standard means. These are all things that drive up the price of gasoline, but instead they just wanted to shift blame onto these, these oil companies. Look, if I owned a company, I wouldn't give them my financials either. You know, that's proprietary information, that's how, you know, that's something that every competitor would love to see, I'd be really reluctant to do it too, especially given the fact that I'm giving it over for a witch hunt exercise while the people who are, you know, every bit is responsible for gas prices skate free and criticizing me. So, yeah, I don't blame these oil companies for being shy about giving their data to the Utilities Commission.
Well, also when you tell a commission that you can't look at government taxes or there's another restriction they put on as well, I think...
Pipeline capacity, they can't look at anything to do with government.
Right.
Minimum wage increases, they can't look at the cost of property taxes and what that means for, you know, these gas stations. Of course, gas stations have to have a little bit of a footprint, I mean, by nature you have to have enough room to, you know, put down your gas-holding stuff underground, you have to have enough space for cars to get in and out, all of this is expensive. Yeah, it's, yeah, these guys should just, these companies should, you know, treat this review as the joke it is. If I were these companies, frankly, I would have pooled our money and brought out a study concurrently on the tax and regulatory impact and released that either the day before or the same day as whenever this review comes out.
Well, of course, people flee across the border to buy gasoline just across the line in Washington State and the big difference is taxes because their gasoline is produced at Cherry Point, the same as most of Vancouver's gasoline.
Yeah, no, I've looked at this before, I think of the, it was something like, of the difference, 95% of the difference was the tax scheme. The other 5% was probably the clean fuel requirements we have in BC, which forces a special refinery additive to be added and that drives up costs as well. So, yeah, all this stuff costs money. The difference between us and Blaine is taxes, but that's why the Blaine drain occurs, Washington, and why I just can't believe the hypocrisy of, you know, Governor Ginsley running for president on a climate change platform when, you know, he won't touch taxes, fuel taxes, can't get a carbon tax passed, you know, all these things that Bruce Clummins have to pay that, you know, Washington State has completely ignored.
Now, isn't it also ironic as well, carbon taxes are supposed to drive people out of their vehicles onto public transit, public transit just up their prices?
Yeah, totally. Well, and because fuel costs cost more and they're huge purchasers of fuel. Look, there's a lot of hypocrisy and stupidity in all this. You know, John Horgan and Andrew Weaver want you to get out of your cars and they have plans to continue to increase gas prices by increasing gas taxes until more people get out of their cars. So, they're being really disingenuous and complete hypocrites and frankly, you know, the press should be all over them for the hypocrisy of this. How can you want to drive people out of their cars by raising prices and then, you know, "Oh, fold your hands" and then get all concerned when, you know, people start complaining that prices are high? This is exactly what the NDP and Greens want and they should be forced to be held responsible for it, not be allowed to kind of wriggle off the hook and say, "Oh, it's all the oil companies' fault." No, you're the ones raising taxes, you're the ones raising the costs, you want to get us out of our cars by raising, making it too expensive to buy gasoline, just admit it, quit being hypocrites about it and just admit it.
Didn't the BC government just reduce the subsidy for people buying electric vehicles?
Yeah, they just cut the subsidy for that, you know, it's, yeah, it's a perplexing time. The NDP get a lot of, bit of a free skate because, you know, they're still feel kind of fresh because, you know, after 17 years of BC Liberals in power, you know, the media are happy to have new cabinet ministers to interview and new deputy ministers to talk to rather than the same old crew. The problem with that is, they're not really holding them to the kind of account they should be held on issues like this. And a lot of times, you know, public policy and government policy criticism flows back to more of a criticism of what the BC Liberals did, you know, before this NDP government rather than actually looking at the BC NDP's record. So, if you're out there, you know, mainstream media reporter, feel free to start actually holding the actual government to account rather than the one that hasn't been in power for two years.
What about the, I would say, very poor rollout of legal marijuana in DC where there's still only a handful of legal stores? The government...
How do you screw up selling marijuana in this province? I thought we were all about marijuana.
Well, that's exactly the question and the premier just angrily snaps, "We're going to do it right." Well, why didn't they do any research? Go to Washington State, Oregon, California, Colorado, places where it's been legal for almost a decade, to find out what worked and what didn't?
Because, look, this is another huge issue. So, let's take Kamloops, Heartland, center of the whole province here, you know, right there, we all know Kamloops. Okay, Kamloops has had, wasn't the first, actually the very first government cannabis store. Since then, Cannabis Council has approved 12 other private cannabis sellers. Not a single one of them have gotten their approvals from the provincial government. And today, the second provincial government cannabis store opened in Kamloops. So, you know, if you're a private owner, you've got holding costs because you've had to rent space, you've had to put in, you know, start hiring staff, get all ready, but you can't go forward until the provincial government gets out of the way and approves you. Meanwhile, the provincial government, you know, seems to find ways to approve, you know, two of the public stores there. So, very frustrating, very unfair, it's happening, you know, there's a handful all over the province. Of course, you know, marijuana taxation revenue is nowhere near the target that they thought they were going to hit because we're not selling enough of it. And people are still going to their black market producers like they always have because at least it's a reliable supply. When we're relying on organized crime for the reliable supply of marijuana, that tells you marijuana legalization has been a failure. So, Mike Farnworth and John Horgan, they need to get this straightened out sooner than later because eventually people are going to become more and more frustrated with what's going on. And, you know, it does show that, you know, what was WAC Bennett's old line about the NDP, that they couldn't manage a peanut stand? Apparently they can't manage a pot stand either.
Yeah, somebody said it's incredible, only the government could lose money selling drugs.
Reminds me of a story out of Nova Scotia where the local hospital subcontracted or got themselves a Tim Hortons franchise in the main lobby there and they lost money. They were one of the very few Tim Hortons outlets in the entire country to lose money and it's because, you know, government forced them to pay, you know, $25 an hour union rates and benefits to all their employees. Only government can manage to screw up a Tim Hortons in Canada, only government can manage to screw up the marijuana business in BC.
Stats Canada just released a report saying that government marijuana costs about twice as much as stuff bought from the black market. Is this, again, government's not taking a look at competition?
Yeah, first of all, imagine being the Stats Canada guy who gets to go out and check that. "No, no, no, I swear, honey, no, I gotta go, I gotta go buy marijuana, it's a thing for work." Yes, this has been the problem all along and why a lot of the myths around, you know, all this marijuana tax revenue and everything we could do with it is of course more myth than truth. You know, you've got to basically keep the price low enough and get enough supply out there to drive the black market out of business. And then 10, 15, 20 years after they've been out of business, you can start looking at raising taxes to kind of where it is for tobacco. Tobacco is often used as a model for this, but we need to remember, like, tobacco is terribly overtaxed, number one. And number two, you still have huge black market issues in tobacco. We don't talk about it much here in the West, even though, you know, there is Asian, Asian groups and cartels bringing in cheap tobacco into BC and Canada. But there was a study a couple of years ago that showed something like one out of every three cigarette butts found on the ground in Toronto and in Vancouver were actually black market nicotine. Nicotine brought in either by First Nations or by Asian gangs. So, we don't want this to happen here with marijuana, we want to get this right and it's frustrating that they, frustrating that they haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I've been in pubs where people have come around asking, "Do you want to buy three cartons of cigarettes for the same price as one regular carton?"
Yeah, and guess what people say? "Hell, yeah." Like, it's like, and it's the difference of taxes again, right? Like, you know, the taxes, you can't find a provincial budget, I don't think, let's see, I've been to seven of them, eight of them now. I don't think we've, I've ever been in provincial budget lockup where they didn't raise the tax on cigarettes. You know, cigarettes are taxed, we talk about housing being taxed at ridiculous rates, cigarettes even more so. And I get it, there's public health concerns and, you know, you want to eradicate as much as possible and I think that government's been fairly successful in slowing the number of smokers, but gosh, you can't do that right now with marijuana. You've got to get, if you're, if you're seriously getting the black market organized crime out of marijuana, you've got to be competitive and you've got to make it, you know, readily accessible and convenient for people to change from their black market dealer to the government or a private store.
Jordan, thank you so much for chatting with us.
Thanks for having me.
My guest has been Jordan Bateman, Vice President of Communications and Marketing for the Independent Contractors and Business Association. His website, icba.ca. If you have any questions... If you have any questions for Jordan or any of our other guests, you can send them to info@howstreet.com. I'm Jim Goddard, thank you for listening.
Comments made on The Goddard Report and TalkDigitalNetwork.com are an expression of opinion only. The Goddard Report is available online and mobile at TalkDigitalNetwork.com. The Goddard Report is a production of How Street Media Incorporated.